I got the high sign. We're ready to go. Oh, look who's here. All righty. This is an informal gathering being held to answer any remaining questions about unification with Rosemont Lutheran Church. The questions in the box, the sealed box, will be read and answered first. We will then take questions from the congregation. We have a mic that will be brought to you so that you can ask your questions and everyone can hear. We will not be reading any, reading or answering any questions that are personal attacks on individuals, nor questions which deal with decisions that have already been made and implemented, such as the sale of the buildings. We hope that we can do this in 45 minutes. Everybody on? Yes, right.
Merry Christmas.
We're hearing of Ken's ability to wrap gifts. First question, has a decision been made to leave a meeting, to have a meeting, sorry, with someone from Rosemont to decide which kitchen supplies will be needed here, there, and where will they be put? Also, Christian services supplies. Yes, we will, we will be taking care of all of those situations after the vote. Where is the structure housing everything and how long will we be using this facility? This facility, I'm not, this facility right here is, if the vote goes through, we will be leaving here January. If the vote doesn't go through, we'll be leaving here first of May. I'm not sure what, where is the structure housing everything? Perhaps that means the storage. That is through, what's the name of that thing?
Shivelys.
Shivelys, that's through Shivelys. We have two storage areas that are $400 each a month. So we're paying $800 a month for storage. Okay, it's, the, the first part of this is, is already passed, so we're not going to go back to that. Why didn't Rosemont join all of us at 2020 Worthington Avenue? Easier to have one congregation move than congregations from Messiah, St. Peter's, St. Matthew's, St. John's go to Rosemont. Who would like that one? Kenny, you want to answer that one? Okay, I'll take it. Okay, first of all, Rosemont has the building and has the pastor. 2020 Worthington Avenue, which is the site we are at right now, is a rental property for us. We no longer own this building. Lehigh graciously has allowed us to be here through a lease for one year, which expires First one, what time will church be? Many can't make it by 9:30. That will be dealt with after the vote. There is already talk of having two worships, or perhaps a Saturday night and a Sunday morning, all, all being talked about now. Why must At Rosemont be added to the name? We gave up name and building. They can give up At Rosemont. Anyone? Okay, Joe.
I think as far as some of the thoughts on that, as we've come in agreement, is there are, we have to still think of Blessed Trinity as it became Blessed Trinity. That was the formulation of three congregations. And so then we all became, and the three congregations became united to become Blessed Trinity. That is done. Now we're starting another new chapter with another congregation. So it's not continuing the old, it is starting something new. So these two congregations coming together need to form a new name, and that's why we are adding Blessed Trinity at Rosemont.
Okay. Will...
Doesn't it also have something to do with the foundation that they have? Is it money involved in it?
Yes.
Can you move me back past two, please?
You want me to do it, or you? Nancy said, doesn't it also have something to do with the foundation that supports Rosemont? I believe it's a Laris, Laris, is that how you say it? Laris Foundation, that is a big contributor. There you go, I know. I wasn't, right, anyway. That is a big contributor to, to Rosemont's financial stability. So that's why they want Rosemont, another reason that they want Rosemont included in the name. And the last question here is, who will be our organist? None of that is, is decided. That will be taken up with the committee that's formed for staffing after the vote. How will the video ministry continue? So many are dependent on that part of our worship life. Absolutely, and that, just as it was brought from St. Peter's to this building, it will be taken from this building to Rosemont. Okey dokey, here we go. Number one, what is Rosemont doing to bring back their members? I, I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that. That would be something that we could ask Pastor Jack about. How many members have left Blessed Trinity for other churches? I don't have an answer for that. Our congregations forming Blessed Trinity are known for their use of worship liturgy, communion every Sunday, and community outreach. Will our worship continue with the use of liturgy as we are used to, or will we have a watered-down version that Rosemont uses? I think the reaction kind of answers that question. We will have a combined, Tony, I'm sorry, did you want...
I just want to comment on that. They are talking with Pastor, with Pastor Jack. He's open to a lot of, looking at a lot of...
Turn the mic on, though, buddy.
When we had our call meeting with Pastor Jack, he's very much open to looking at what they were currently doing. You know, and the one thing I said to him is, you know, they have the green hymnals. I said, you know, we've been using those red, the red hymnals, which are later, they're, they're very much in favor, he's very much in favor in adjusting their current practices to include what we've been doing. And, you know, he, he, he was blown away about how, how much we sing, you know, I mean, the, the congregation here is a singing congregation, and, you know, I, I think that would be something that, that he will welcome with open arms, is looking at what their current practices are. And that, that was very apparent in the meeting with him.
Thank you, Tony. Number four, would like to have a Q and A with the proposed pastor as to his vision on how he is going to proceed in blending all of the congregations, his ability to, oh, sorry, his availability to members, views on stewardship, outreach ideas, where he stands on fundraising. All of these are why we have a call committee, and Tony, if you wanted to address any of that.
Yeah, we, we addressed all of those issues. Those were, we had 20-some questions that we asked as part of that process, and he has a lot of very good ideas in regard to that. That's one of the reasons that we unanimously decided to offer the call, is because he's been thinking about that and has some really good ideas. Their church does a lot of community outreach, as do we. So he was pretty excited about combining what we do with what they currently do in providing even more robust community outreach to the city of Bethlehem. So that was something that, that all those areas, we did address with him in the call meeting.
Thank you. Pastor Seltzer should lead a worship service at Blessed Trinity using our liturgy. Thank you for the comment. How much staff does Pastor Seltzer feel he needs to acquire results at Blessed Trinity? Not sure what that one means. But anyway, staffing will, will be addressed through a staffing committee, and we will decide how much staff we need. Why are we not having a nine or 10 o'clock service on Christmas Eve? Two-hour times, something interfere with family dinner times? Oh, I see, the times chosen interfere with family dinner times. Those were the two times that were decided between, I don't know where Pastor, between Pastor Otto and Pastor, Pastor Jack. They felt that those were the, the best times to service the, the Christmas Eve. Historically, our attendance at the later services have steadily declined, so the five and the seven were felt to be the most well-attended times. How will additional services be added to a Sunday morning? That will be decided as we move forward. Will the office of, I don't know how to say this, the PACO, remain at the new church? The answer is no. Will the two fellowship halls continue to be rented out to other groups? One will. Storage space is needed. What is being planned to make parking more available? Anybody? Nobody wants to. Okay, so we have, what? Oh, Ken, oh.
I think as far as parking has been discussed so far, Rosemont has approached the city of Bethlehem for extended handicap parking spaces. They've talked to the city about temporary stop signs in the street so that we can safely cross the street if required to park across the street. I know that there was discussion about the use of some of the parking lots that are in the neighborhood that might be available for us to use, and, and also some spots are available behind, behind the church at the current time, very few. And as far as any future discussion is, is concerned, that topic is always going to be on the table because we know we need parking. So we're unsure what, where that may turn to in the, in the future, but it certainly is a concern that we're going to address as we move forward.
Why did we ask to buy St. Mark's property? Wouldn't we have just shared their building? I, I believe that we've already gone over that, but just briefly, does anybody want to handle that one? Oh, Joe.
As we did go to St. Mark's as far as their property and discussions and everything, their facility is, would not be able to house, I think, the combination of Blessed Trinity and St. Mark's. There is only three small offices in the area, in their building. Their worship space would be very snug for all of us, and especially during the holidays, I don't think we'd be able to have enough seating space of the capacity during the holidays of Easter and Christmas. That would make everyone feel comfortable and welcoming without being too snug against each other. The kitchen area is small, it's not commercial grade on that, and the social room just has a smaller capacity of what we have or would entice to hold events here to best service that. So the current building as it sits would not meet the needs that the property search location was looking for as far as conditions that would be the best for us to move into.
We're not taking questions from the floor right now.
I just want to comment, the bottom line is they want nothing to do with us, because Messiah members went there and they don't want any part of the congregation. So let's put that out there.
Well, you just did, thank you. Oh, did I say that out loud? I'm sorry. Has there been any discussion going forward to grow the new church? Absolutely, that is one of our goals. That's why we're joining and being able to move forward. Can we know who the buyer is for Blessed Trinity, AKA Light of Christ? Well, I, I can say that it is a community group that will service children and, in the arts. I'm not sure the name of the group. Why did we omit the process of choosing a new name for the new church like we did each time we joined with other congregations? The, we, we are retaining our name. Blessed Trinity is in the name. Okay, this is, this one's just about the staff again, and that has been answered. We'll be having a staffing committee. Has anyone suggested to Rosemont Church that they consider merging into Blessed Trinity instead of forming a new congregation? This would have made the transition so much easier. When will we get to see the documents we will be voting on? Joe?
The merger agreement was just prepared and finished this past week on Friday from our attorney, Bill Matts, on that. So from that step forward, it goes to the councils for them to review on the merger agreement and for their review to approve before it goes out to the congregation. So the council, both councils of Rosemont and also Blessed Trinity are meeting their own this Tuesday, so upon approval, they will be distributed to the members of the congregation. There are quite lengthy documents. We will make them available online as a PDF for you to read. We'll also have some print, printed versions for anyone to come into the office to pick up, and we'll also have them available on Sundays during worship for you to pick up also.
If the vote is positive, will we immediately begin worshiping exclusively at Rosemont location? We will continue to worship here through December, and then, starting in January, we will be worshiping at Rosemont. Please remember that Pastor Otto's last day is Sunday, December 31st, so it will be a logical transition just to begin over at Rosemont at that point. Have you looked into other forms of ministry, such as parish agreement, like the UPG was with a contract for Pastor Jack instead of a merger, which can't be undone? We had a lengthy meeting with the synod. The bishop was here, two representatives from the synod were here. We talked about all the different options that would be open to us, one of which was a contract situation, and as a council, we agreed that that wasn't something that we really wanted to pursue, and in speaking with Pastor Jack, it was not something he was interested in entering into. When will the elevator be installed? I know people who can't, who don't go to the coffee hour because they can't use the steps. Yes, that is a major, a major concern, and the elevator committee has already been formed and is looking into the options that would be available for us to modify the building for an elevator. Could the communion be given in small cups or a common cup and not dip the wafer? I am sure all of our churches still have cups to use. That will be something that we can deal with through the Worship and Music Committee. Will our banners, holiday decorations, hymnals, et cetera be used? The general overall answer would be yes. Will every church have their stuff, quote unquote, used, or do we keep it in storage till we find a church building that is all of ours? Will we still keep looking for land to build? We're not looking for land to build. We don't have enough money to, to buy land and to build a building. The storage issue, let me read that again. Will every church have their stuff used, or do we keep it in storage till we find a church building that is all of ours? Rosemont will be all of ours. As Joe was explaining, the chapter of forming Blessed Trinity is over. We are Blessed Trinity. Now we are going into the new chapter of taking Blessed Trinity to the, the next part of our journey. That part of our journey is taking us to Rosemont. That is our new home. That will be a wonderful, as, as Cassie said last week, we're good at joining together. We know how to do this. Yesterday at that, at the game day, there, there were a couple of representatives from, from Rosemont, a couple of people came to, to play games, and it's amazing how quickly you just all meld together. That's what we've done already with the three churches, and that's what we're going to be able to do with Rosemont. Saturday evening worship was important. Can't always make it Sunday morning. Will Pastor Jack start that up again? Yes, that is in discussion. I miss the Advent and Lent Wednesday evening services. I do, too. Also, the Holy Thursday and Good Friday services need to be continued. Agreed. I miss the Bible studies, both day and/or evening. They'll be looked into. Sunday school has not been mentioned. How and will we be able to start that program? Hopefully, with a full church, we can involve more children of all ages. Agreed. Will church service in the park continue? Yes. We also enjoy the services and meals afterward outside on the churchyard on Saturday evening. Yes, and they have a nice, big, open, green space that we can certainly look into continuing Okay, well, where's, where's that thing? That was easy. Okay, now, oh, in the back. Okay, Sandy, get your track shoes on. Jack? We're gonna, we, we have to have it for the livestream.
Yes, how is it determined that we're going to have our final Christmas at Rosemont instead of here? We've got this larger congregation to move everybody over to Rosemont. It might be our last Christmas here, and just curious how that was determined.
Our last Christmas here was last year.
Well, you said we're not really going to move over until January if the vote is positive.
That's correct. We're, we're, but the last Christmas for Light of Christ was last year. We are now in a rental situation. This is not Blessed Trinity's home. If, if the vote goes through, we will be in our new home on Christmas Eve. We will be full-time in our new home in January. Saying that the last, the, this is, this is very important. I know it sounds like semantics, but the thought process here, we have to realize, this is not our building. This is not Blessed Trinity's building, and it is not Light of Christ. We are simply here as temporary congregationalists. I made that word up, you like it? This, and so going to Rosemont for Christmas Eve is going to our new home for Christmas Eve.
Can I ask one more thing?
Sure.
What Tony had mentioned about talking to the pastor, I don't think the pastor's ever talked to us as a congregation. Again, you know, spelling out a lot of the things that he talked to Tony about with their committee, it would really be nice for us to hear his thoughts and ideas, you know, in the future, for the future.
Well, I, I do know that Pastor Jack is very open to sharing those, but that is not part of the call process.
I hear what you're saying, but the call process, the call committee makes the recommendation in here, we actually are an advantage because we know Pastor Jack in other instances, and we've heard a brief in other instances, you wouldn't even see him until he was doing this call sermon. And after the fact, after he does this call sermon, we vote, then is when we have that conversation. We had that conversation as a committee, and it was representative of St. John's, had representation, St. Peter's, Light of Christ, and Rosemont were all represented as part of that. So I, I understand what you're saying, but typically that does not happen in the call process. You don't get a chance to, if the call committee is to interview him, you get the, to get those questions after the call meetings he's serving at the ministry.
Over this past year, there have been three congregations taking leave of their properties. I think members of all congregations are going through a grief process. It's fine to have the activities, and it's wonderful to get together with members from Rosemont. That is, that is great, needs to be continued, but underneath it all, we are still all going through a grief process. Is there something can be done to help us through this?
Absolutely. Pastor Jack has already been in contact with the bishop, has been in meetings with the bishop regarding, regarding that very subject, and has requested that the synod provide some leadership for bringing in people that may be able to help with the grief process.
I was just wondering, like, with the altars and the crosses and the baptismal fonts, is that something that we can, I know this is probably, my mind goes crazy, but that we can switch out, like, every, so, you know, what are we, what are we doing with that? How, are we keep picking one altar, one baptismal font, the crosses? What's happening from our, you know, everybody's building?
Well, that will all be determined once we, we know where we're going. So, once we know if we're going to Rosemont, then we will have a committee that will look through what we have, what Rosemont has, and how we can combine the two, what structurally their, their sanctuary may be augmented by some of our things. They have two large social rooms, so that, you know, there's, there's a lot of wall space over there, so.
Is there a chapel? Like we had at St. Peter's?
Can you give her the mic, please?
Is there a chapel in that building like we had at St. Peter's that we could have?
No. Any other questions? Oh, there's a question. Mr., Mr. Little.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to all the committees that have labored for many years to get to this point now. When we started this, I had a full head of hair. Okay? We're at a point now where you are blending four congregations together. It's inevitable, change will occur, okay? Change will occur. And the one thing about change that's constant, the older you get, the more difficult it becomes. You think back of when the computers came out, can't figure out how to make it work, we'll punch this key or punch that, that'll make it happen. About the telephones, do you have the G-15s? That's a smart telephone. I never got one of those because I thought you had to be smart to use it. But change is inevitable, it's going to come. There's only one person that I know that welcomes change. There's only one person that I know that looks forward to change, that's a baby with a soiled diaper.
And if I could just, an editorial comment for Mr. Little, thank you very much, but it is actually five congregations that we are bringing together because we start with St. Matthew's, but thank you. Questions? What? Go ahead.
Just going back to your comments, Tony, thank you. I think we can all agree this isn't quite the typical call process, so I really appreciated that information you gave us today. I really feel strongly that it needs to be disseminated to the congregation. We are here today and we were able to hear it, I know it's being livestreamed, but maybe some kind of letter from the call committee about findings, I don't mean findings, but your perceptions and the reason why you, the committee decided to call Pastor Jack. I just think that would be very important information so that we can all make an informed decision.
Okay, I still don't understand the process. To me, it would be easier to move one congregation, Rosemont, here, where we-
We are one congregation moving there.
I'm not finished. In the beginning, I understand what was done, but not how it was done or why it- Whose decision was it that, I understand we joined with St. Matthew's, and we had St. Peter's join us here, made a wonderful congregation, why was not Rosemont asked to join the other four congregations here? Or in the beginning, why was they not asked? Whose decision was that?
They, we, so, we are one congregation, they are one congregation. Now, the difference is, they have a building and they have a pastor. We have a rental space. So, the thing is, is that it makes more sense to take our one congregation to the building with the pastor.
This is before there were any sales, before anything was talked about being sold. I'm talking about before that.
Well, Rose, we didn't know of Rosemont at that point, but we're really not going to go back, and I stated in the beginning, we're not going to go back and rehash things that have already been determined and have already been in place. Thank you.
My question is, there were probably fifteen, we're going to address that. I have never voted on something that we're going to address in the future, so therefore, if we vote to go with Rosemont, we're going to have to go with whatever Rosemont decides or the committee of Rosemont and Light of-
I'm sorry, I lost your train of thought there. The committee, if I understood, the committees are going to be joint committees.
Right, right.
Okay, so, there is, to our way of thinking based upon the timeframe that we have to work with, it was essential that we get the Constitution done, that the call committee be in place and function, and that the merger agreement be voted on. That's a lot of work with a very short time. We know from our past experience that we have to do a staffing committee, we have to do a music and worship committee, joint committees, we, you know, there are a lot of financial committees, those kinds of things all have to be done, but they can't be done by December 3rd. To, we can't go through the whole transition team year and a half, we don't have, or two years, what was it, Tony? Two, two years. We don't have that timeframe, just because of where we're at in the whole process.
How much are we-
A dollar a month.
That's terrible, I don't know if we continue.
Just to, I guess, flesh out the last question. From what I've heard at previous meetings, is that the people working on this have worked awful hard to include members of St. Matthew's, the Windus Church, St. John's, this church into the council and committees. So, our joining the new church, it's not a 50/50, it's a five churches, it's a 20%, 20%, 20% kind of group to make these decisions as to which way we're going to continue in the future. Is that correct?
The reason being is that we have, you're absolutely right that we took 100% and divided into however many churches we were trying to get represented, that's true. But now, we are not those individual churches, we are Blessed Trinity. So, that's that new chapter. We now have Blessed Trinity and Rosemont. Now, we're not saying that it's going to necessarily be 50/50, but there's going to be representation from Rosemont on each of the committees. Right now, if the Constitution states that there will be three additional members on the council, three members from Rosemont, so Blessed Trinity will have 12 and Rosemont will have three to begin. I can't really say about the committees because it depends on who's going to volunteer, you know? We tried very hard to get representation from each of the existing campuses when we started this, but now, we're past that.
I just wanted to say that the Constitution Committee was made up of representations from Light of Christ, St. John's, St. Peter's, and Rosemont. So, we had, it was a combination, yes, we used the Constitution that was adopted by Blessed Trinity last year, and we combined it with what Rosemont was. We went through it, whatever we could change, a lot of things we can't change, so, there is representation from everybody.
Right, and the reason you can't change them is because they're mandated by the national
Would you explain exactly what will happen on December the 3rd? What the process will be on December the 3rd? I think many people misunderstood that we all need to be over there for the vote. We heard about that last week.
That's not a misunderstanding, that's where we're voting, that's where we're worshiping.
I know, but would you explain exactly how the votes will take place?
It will take place after worship in the sanctuary.
There's more than one vote, correct?
Yes, I believe it was outlined in the letter, did you receive your letter?
I received a letter, but some people may not have.
Well, everyone should have received a letter, is there anyone in here that didn't receive their letter?
Or maybe people listening?
Everyone that's on the mailing list, there's, I believe, almost 400 letters. I know, Sandy, you don't know the answer to this, but if you did know the answer to this, how many went out? It was over 400. So, everyone got their letter. We will be voting, we will be voting on the merger first, that makes us the new entity, and then the new, that will be individual votes, and that's two-thirds. So, Blessed Trinity has to approve it by two-thirds, and Rosemont has to approve it by two-thirds. Then, if that passes, then we will be the new entity, so the second vote will be on the acceptance of Pastor Jack as the called pastor of the new entity. And that will be a two-thirds vote, but that will be a combined vote. Anyone else?
This is not so much of a question, it's more of an editorial comment, thank you, Ed. But I know from myself, and we all are grieving the loss of our church, the loss of Blessed Trinity, the loss of everything, but even though I'm grieving the loss, I am looking forward to the hopefulness of a new tradition, a new chapter. I know it's hard to always say goodbye to something old, but it's always good to say hello to something new. We're all coming here together, I can't stay, you know, I'm sure everyone else is so happy to see the faces that we've been grown to come accustomed to seeing, and just, why wouldn't we want to milk them more faces into our church family? Thank you.
All right, there's food downstairs, along with coffee, and, yes, did you want to say something else? You do?
What lies ahead of us is so very important to what lies behind us. What happened in the past yesterday is in the past, and none of us, none of us sitting here today can change that, and yet, every one of us sitting here today can change the future. We just whatever we want it to be, as long as it's for the glory of our God. God opens another door for us, let's appreciate this, let's be thankful, how truly blessed we are that we're given this opportunity, where other churches, a lot of them don't have this, what we have. So, I'm asking each and every one of you today, at your own special time, wherever and whenever, to get on your knees and ask your God what your part is in all of this, and let's put all in parts together and make this happen.
Lunch is on Ron downstairs.
I just want to say, I don't need it, I just want to say, Blessed Trinity at Rosemont sounds very classy as far as I'm concerned, and we're not losing our name, and we're moving in with other people. When we left St. John's, we had a huge dinner, and I wound up passing out. I felt terrible when we left St. Peter's, and of course, we're going to feel badly when we leave here because now we've become accustomed to this, but you know, maybe I'll fly at the next show. Okay? Everybody good? All right. We got finished with the livestreams. Thank you very much for coming. Thanks for having me. 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 Thanks for having me.